Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And before we go to the agenda, let's please stand together for the flag of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. So we'll move now on the agenda until the government program update. We're going to go into Deputy Town Manager Sean.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So just purpose of this afternoon is just to provide an update on where we are. There's several aspects of these really filling. That have been transitioned over the last several months to a year. We want to provide an update of what we've accomplished, where we are, or what we still have to do. But Jessica, or if you're in, is going to lead most of this. I'm a finance director, so Jessica will take it from here. And then I will be in some of it, and then after you also.
So good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today I will provide update on billing and collections as Sean mentioned. So this is our agenda. I'll start with giving you an update on our third-party review. And then Erica and IT will give you an overview of our new software. And then I'll discuss the solar program, talk through a return to normal operations, and then Sean will wrap things up with the staffing update.
Do you want us to hold all the questions to the end?
I would prefer that.
Okay.
Suffer me do that.
So before I go into the update, I kind of want to talk through how we got here. And so in early twenty four, in early July twenty twenty four, the town experienced the cybersecurity incident. And IT reacted swiftly and intentionally took the town's systems offline. Now, due to this necessary action, the town didn't have a system for over a month, which means the town could not process or send out any utility bills. Now, I do want to point out that the town's financial system was taken offline, but meters were not affected by the cybersecurity incident. The meters were still running, however, we just didn't have a system available to send that data to to process the billing. Now, once the system was restored in August, staff began to input the payments that we received during the downtime. And the meters were, the meter reads were began to be put into the system so that billing could resume. Billing resumed in August twenty twenty four with our cycle two. Those are the first bills generated when the system was restored. The cycle two bills were sent out for approximately two months of service. Cycle one followed in September twenty twenty four, and that was for approximately three months of service. Now, during the time when the system was down, customers were encouraged to continue to make payments to reduce the amount that they would owe once this, once the bills were generated. Now, some customers took heed to that message and made payments while others did not. So due to the multiple months of usage that was included in the August and September bill, they were understandably higher than a normal monthly bill would be. In addition, for the customers who did not make payments during the time when the system was down, their bills were definitely higher than normal. So the higher bills coupled with the cybersecurity incident less customers concerned over the accuracy of their bills. So then the town engaged Barry Dunn, an independent third-party audit firm, to complete a simulation of the whole billing system for the time period affected by the cybersecurity incident. Barry Dunn communicated their preliminary results to council in May of twenty twenty five at the May Council meeting. The preliminary results show that the town overall underbilled our customers by approximately $300,000. And I'll go into detail about what contributed to that underbilling in a future slide. In addition to then stimulating our entire billing system, they also took it a step further and analyzed 100 individual accounts, 50 from cycle one and 50 from cycle two. The results of that analysis showed that 99 out of the hundreds that were sampled were underbilled, which means the town did not charge them enough for services. Now, after this information was communicated to council, you all decided that customers would have an opportunity to opt-in to have their accounts individually analyzed by Barry Dunn. Thanks. It's here. So let's talk about the account reviews. So after the May council meeting took staff around two weeks to create the opt-in form and get it published online. Now, residents had until July 31st to opt-in to have their account individually reviewed. This was done by completing a form on the town's website. Now, we received 179 requests for account reviews. And that sounds like a lot, but when you put it in perspective, it's less than 1% of our entire customer base. I just wanted to put some parameters around that for you. There are multiple levels of review for the account that chose to opt-in. Their usage is analyzed for reasonableness. The bill is being calculated by Barry Dunn. And then once Barry Dunn is finished, the analysis is sent to Apex Finance and Finance Management reviews Barry Dunn's work. Finance works with the communications departments very heavily so that they can have the information to update the town's website on a weekly basis to kind of provide updates on the progress of these reviews. We do have a timeline of when we want to wrap up these account reviews. We expect all levels of review to be completed by the end of August. During the month of September, we will communicate the results to both residents and council. And then during the month of October, we'll be updating customers' accounts. So I want to call out that, that last step specifically. In the May council meeting, it was mentioned, but I want to remind everyone that legally you can't waive a non-utility debt, which means residents who opt-in, if it's determined that they owe the town, they will be required to repay, repay the amount that was underbill. And this should not be a surprise to any of the 179 folks that opted in because before they could opt-in, they had to go through numerous prompts where they were given this information and they had to agree that they understood what that meant. So of the 179 reviews that have come in, we have 20% have gone through the entire process, which means we looked at their usage. Barry Dunn's done their recapitulation and finance leadership has reviewed Barry Dunn's work. So all of these statistics up here are just based on the 20% that have gone through the entire process. So the average amount that the customer owes the town, $35.44. Average amount that the town owes the customer, $9.52. Highest amount so far that any particular customer owes the town, $73.07, while the town's highest amount is $13.67. $3.16, while the town's lowest amount is $1.44. Now, of the reviews that have been completed thus far, 88% of those, the customer owes the town, which we, which is in line with the Barry Dunn report, which is kind of in line with what staff has been saying this whole time. Overall, we have underbilled the customers. There is a small percentage that the town does owe the customer. Now, again, only 20% are completed. As we continue through the month of August and get more and more reviews done, I anticipate that 88% is going to rise. So in addition to doing the simulation, Barry Dunn prepared a report. The final report is not available just yet. They have not provided it to us. However, we did get a draft. And so we wanted to provide counsel some of the key findings from that draft. So you'll see, we kind of broke it up between cycle one and cycle two because there's different nuances depending on which cycle you were in. So for cycle one customers billed in September, they were billed for approximately three months of usage at the new rate, but only one month of base charges. So billed for three months, but only had one month of base charges on there. This was done to offset the July 1 rate increase and the possible tier increase for water usage due to three months of usage included in one bill opposed to just a normal one month. Cycle one customers were billed for all three months of their non-meter service. Let's say your bar, your garbage, your yard, stormwater, et cetera, things that don't require a meter to be billed. And then their electric load management credits were applied in cycle one. In contrast, we have cycle two, which was billed in August of 2024, and they were billed for approximately two months. And you can see that cycle two actually went out before cycle one. That's just because of the timing of when the systems came back online. It was, it was cycle two's time to be billed. So that's why that one was first. The non-meter services for cycle two or cycle two were only billed for one month. So there was two months of usage, but they only had one month of non-meter service, which is your garbage or stormwater, et cetera. The cycle, this was done also to offset some of the impact of the rate increase because this crossed over that July 1, the July 1 time period. So we had that new rate increase that went into effect during that time. So the report also mentions resource and staffing constraints. So the same folks that were in billing and collections, that's inputting the payments and the meter reads into the system once the system came back online, were some of the same folks handling the calls that were coming in. And it was a lot of calls and they were in-person visits. So there were just competing priorities during the time after we were recovering from, from cyber. They also mentioned the impact of concurrent projects. And as you know, we went live with the utility billing system last month, but we were in testing and trainings well before last month. Like all last year, we were preparing for, for what happened last month going live with the new system. The project was already in the works, the, the transition to a new software prior to the cybersecurity incident happening. And then all the factors that are in this table contributed to us underbilling residents overall by about $300,000 due to the lost revenues and our base charges, as well as some lost revenues in our non-meter services. So in addition to their findings, they provided us some recommendations. And I've put some of the key ones up here so that we can, so they can be shared today. They wrote the recommendations up into three sections, technology process, and then organizational recommendations. Now, the technology, they would like us to conduct regular system maintenance and upgrades to ensure billing and customer service platforms remain current and functional, including in our non-production environment. So for most of our systems, we have the test environment. So they just wanted to make sure that we're keeping all our environments up to date. They also wanted to establish clear protocols for system access and troubleshooting, ensuring authorized personnel can address issues properly. In the process recommendations, they want us to document our key processes that are especially the ones that are particularly complex, variable, or not well-understood. And that's something that as we are transitioning to a new system, it's, it's the perfect opportunity to do that. A lot of our processes have changed. There was one way we did things in New World and a different way now in Millsoft. And we're using this as an opportunity to kind of address that recommendation in particular. And then we need to clearly define and communicate special project plans to align expectations, timelines, and roles across departments. And our mass meter change out is a good example of that. That's a project that affects multiple departments. And so that's just one of their recommendations. And then for organizational, they would like us to provide some cross-functional training between billing and collections and our meter service staff to increase flexibility and resilience, as well as review policies and ordinances to ensure that they align with the new system configuration. So again, the new system, that's against an opportunity to kind of look at our policies and make sure that they align with what we can do in our new system. So once they finalize the report, again, this was from their draft, we will make it available for council. And we will continue to review the recommendations to address any that we have not already started. But there are some that we have already started to do. And now I will pause to turn it over to Erica so she can provide an overview of our new systems.
Well, the big questions is now the time for you.
Sit back down.
Can you give, can you give an example of the last bullet? Like what's, what kind of policies are we talking about here? Like what's, like, not the, not the, the details, but kind of high level? What do you mean by that, that last bullet?
All the policies that kind of relate to billing and collections, just as far as like how long we'll have a payment plan. It's, you know, just an example, all anything, any parameters that we have around our billing and collection process. This is the time, especially with not just this report coming out, but because we're in a new system, let's look at everything. Everything was on the table because we're definitely changing how our process is for it. The end result is always going to be the same, you know, we get reads, we get the bill out, but the way we do that has changed. And so is, is there things that we need to look at to just, to see if we can better align? So they didn't provide any specifics. They were just giving us overall guidance. Like this is an opportunity for you guys to just take a look, and there may not be anything that we need to change, but at least we need to go through that exercise and kind of take, evaluate our policy to see if there's anything that can't be changed.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was just, I guess the level I mostly know about is like what's in our budget as far as the, the rates and everything. But I think what you're talking about is maybe a level down from.
Operational.
Yeah, okay.
There's some things that do, so for instance, when in the past, based with our new system, there's actually a little more flexibility in terms of what, when, for each, for each cycle, when the person not in the current billing can start looking at reads or when the meter readers actually go out and start doing reads versus how it used to be in the past. So it's, we have a little more flexibility with the new system. And so we worked through what that communication channel is for. I'm finished with this. Now I can move to this next project. And so those are, there's more of the processes than that, that piece of it that we're just trying to fix. Other policy things like Jessica mentioned, it was a great example on the payment plan. In the past, it's been six months, but we look at things like it's going to be longer for a year. And we'll, you know, so the customer service side, how do we do that? We have another one we're all stuck with. What is required when we start making adjustments? That's one that we, that's been very strict and rigid in the past, that we've been a lot more flexed on. So we kind of formalized what happens on our team as they empowering them to make decisions on what they can do about this. You've got some customer service policies that we're trying to make sure we formalize that are a lot more flexible and empowering for our staff and better for our customer. And then also on the process side, just how we work with it, just like mentioned. So maybe that gives you a little more, a few more examples of what.
Do we need, do we actually need staggered cycles going forward? Because I think it's confusing for people that they don't know that that's happening because they don't see that on their side.
So Jessica, you have a wrong evaluation of this, but there's a good chance we actually have more than two cycles.
More than two, okay, because of the workload.
Sure workload. So not just on what's out there in terms of what customers are getting, just the workload on the number of accounts that, you know, as it goes through the process. So the system can handle what it, what your staff can handle as such as you. There's a lot of validation that has to go through. So there's a lot of various reports, a lot of reports that are printed and reviewed as we move for flags, move for things that pop up, rechecks, things that didn't come through. And so that takes a lot of time. We have one cycle that is at 13,000, 14,000, I think. And then I think that's cycle one. I think cycle two is over 15,000 accounts now. So when I started, it's the same two people that were doing it when I started here years ago, when each cycle was less than 10,000. And so even though this new system was a little bit flexible, it's a lot. Some of those delays is what we've got. So talking about the processes again, especially with the new world, where we've got to work through and we'll get better in our new system. But as they're learning the new processes and going through that, they've also been handling 75% increase in some cases of their workload in terms of review, counseling. And then that creates a delay in getting the bill out, getting the red, and then it would get snowball effect. And that's what we're seeing in some things. We do not want that in terms of our service, our service states builds it down this way. So the recommendation with, you know, what it looked like, unless we get to the second piece later on. But the, there's a good chance that it's probably better to break off the multiple cycles. Jessica, do you want to speak to what you're feeling away from other jurisdictions?
Yeah, so the point, that is planned to preview that. Right now, the focus is staff understanding the new system and not just finance staff, staff in all the departments that this interacts. And once we're back on, back to normal operations and everything's kind of level set, okay, now let's take a look at these cycles. What we don't want to do is disrupt the cycles right now while we're still trying to calm everything down. Let's tackle one big initiative at a time. Let's get this, let's feel good about being in this new software. We've only been in it for a month, but we're more proficient. And then that is definitely something that we're going to be looking at the utility billing software company to kind of help us with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
How many, how many cycles does Carrie run?
Carrie bills every week. And so there's a different cycle. So I'm around four. There's a different cycle going each week, and there's a different person handling those cycles. And yes, Carrie's larger, like 70,000 accounts or whatnot. We're not quite there. But to Sean's point, we have the same two people that's been doing billing since the town was a lot smaller than we are now.
Thank you so much, Jessica, for the information. I just have a few questions. As far as the detailed report from Barry Dunn, the timeline, I mean, do we have?
I would imagine what was in the next.
Any day, yeah.
So there was an original kind of, there were pieces and things together. Most of our issue, we received that, we provided feedback on that. And then this draft report, we got it yesterday afternoon. So I know this has worked to get those things in there on this today. So we sent a couple of questions and comments back, and so we're just waiting on them to, it's, it's close to finish. It's very close to finish. I don't expect a question weeks, three weeks. That would be the extent. I can't imagine if it does, I'll make sure I would be nice enough. I don't foresee it being up that high.
And then would that be made available to the community as well?
That's, that's the end. That's the point.
And then last question, because I know we're Andy's folks. So would that be in the contract for, for them and their work that they're seeking?
In terms of?
Very good.
Which part? The report is already part of the contract.
Right, so that'd be it for them.
Yes, yeah, we're wrapping up with them because it'll be the report and then they send the review, which is actually a separate. Yeah, yeah, which is actually a separate contract, but we're, we're kind of coming to an end of our time.
Erica.
Okay. Round. Thank you. Okay, so fun stuff, new software. So as she said, we were juggling all of the current responsibilities that we have, the town growing and growing. Larger amounts, more customers, more things to go ahead and run. As of this morning, as you'll see, our new portal shows, and we were looking at it back there with Stacy, Troy and I. And we just clicked away and clicked back. We already had one or two new people that signed up. So your total users that are now logging into the new system, the online versus waiting for, for a bill, which is our total service accounts, going back to policies, they got to decide not just, you know, do we want MasterCard and Visa because we don't accept American Express too? Now we do all Google Pay, Apple Pay, Venmo, PayPal. So a lot of policies go into that too, because compliance, BCA compliance, what we need to do. All those are going to be handled and so forth. So a lot of things to consider in those ways of financial. So that's kind of put down the yays. Why did we go here? Why did we put all this extra stress? This was for definitely the residents, so they have better ways to pay, more flexibility. They can log into the portal. I, I can't remember Stacy's back there. Should I get back to you? How many people we had in E-suites? I know we didn't have thousands. So we've already bypassed what we had in E-suites, which I thought so, and we were close. And this is only the first month. So I feel strongly that this is getting adopted well and will be a benefit. So what exactly did we add? So this is the visual of all of the different software. I highlighted, as you see in red, so those, the, the box of red is kind of what has been affected. In this instance, we have additional new things that were added as far as replacing our system. Our old system was a platform that had many different modules. So it had a utility module, had an HR module, had a finance module. It was all one system. So it either worked or it didn't work. There was no configuration or no, not a lot of ability to kind of play around or do different things. This one is full of customizations and integrates with about everything. So to be able to provide the services that we want to provide with a growing community and all of the, the needs, different needs that they have, this is the system that a couple of years ago, staff had chosen, right? So we did the full survey, and I think I presented on the ERP. We had a core committee with the different departments. They went through scenarios, and this is what was chosen. And kind of the previous slide tells you why. They wanted all those new different options and capabilities for our residents. So we have Millsoft, which is kind of top and center, which is the main kind of heart. We call it the, the central information system for all of the data. And that is our utility billing platform on the backside. So that's what staff sees. SCW, which is what I showed previous and just to the left, is what the customers see. We wanted a more capabilities within the platform that the community would see and the ability to do different things. So that is now SCW. IP Keys is an added piece that we never had before. Within metering, we never really had what they call an NDM or a meter device manager. So that all of that stuff flows through. So kind of explaining it, these are three senses is also new. That's the new metering system. These three are what handle all of the reads that come in for the meters. They now flow into IP Keys. So in the future, finance and IT will not have to worry about what types of meters or what brand. They can pick whatever they want as long as it flows into IP Keys. IP Keys will then pass that information into Millsoft, and it will make a lot smoother transition if we need to change. So that, that is the changes on that side. SCW, again, customer platform. Data Voice and DocuSign have been around, still had to make those integrations, still had work to do there. Juro is the new contract platform that all of these went through. But again, I think you were leading that, right? So a lot of my team, Troy, and, and she was leading that as those changes were happening in our small projects. Before was the first round of ERP changes. So that's all the finance, the HR, the basics behind the scenes. So that happened in January. And then, as you said, a month ago, we have second section kind of in green. That happened in July. So just getting over the changes that happened in January, got another set of changes in July. And we'll do our third round of changes for software to be off the old platform, hopefully by the end of the year. So any questions?
How many legacy systems are we replacing?
We're replacing New World. New World is.
Single platform.
Yeah, it had various mods. And there are a lot of little things that we used to help get by with some of the things that New World couldn't do. But that was your base legacy system. And we still have it right now just for planning and permitting because those modules are still active and going. But they are phase three. So hopefully by 2026, we will have fully replaced it.
I'd like to get your perspective on how to best communicate this. Because this is first, every time Erica, you say something, I'm always like, my God, you're really doing a lot of stuff. Yeah, because I mean, we're not just changing a system that's dealing with people's billing. I think that's the tough part for right-handers. When they think billing cycle, they're thinking there's one computer, one program, one thing that happens. And what you're telling us again is how that billing system is configured to a finance system, which is configured to the meters that are being, you know, making sure that the interface between those meters and our readers are all there. And also being able to show a backend that gives you guys more data to track, train, track and decide. But also be a format that lets someone who's at home pay the, there's just so many pieces there.
And I think.
On a facelift, it's a whole body.
Right. And, and I think part of it is, you know, part of the, the tough part of communicating this is you guys have done an amazing job of explaining the piece that people see. And then the effect of what took place with the cyber attack is that that official, that basically affected all the parts that people don't know and don't see and don't understand the interconnected. And you did a great job of kind of working. And you did a great job of kind of working beyond. I mean, every time you talk, I'm always amazed that you guys and the rest of staff, the ability to kind of pull all this stuff together. Because when you say you took the system offline, what you really are saying is, we couldn't do any job. Yet things still got done. And so the thing I'd like to know is, how how do we best explain this? How do we, how do we get people to understand the interconnectivity of all of our systems? And why that interconnectivity is important? And how that makes your job easier, makes the rest of staff's job easier, but more importantly, makes the the customer's a lot easier. How do we, how do we communicate that? Because it seems like we've got a lot of systems that are luring on each other, and you're doing a great job of making it easy. But every time I talk to do this, and I think I'm a bright guy, constantly going, this is a lot.
We do, and it is a lot. Um, there there's a lot of departments, right? So if you explain it as every department has a couple of tools and has a toolbox, right? When they bring that, all our tools have to work together to build a house. So that's, that's what we're doing, right? We're, we're, we're building the scenery for them. And a lot of people don't care, right? How, why, how do I get water when I turn on the faucet, right? There's a ton of things behind the scenes to to get you that water that comes out of the faucet. Well, it's the same thing. I mean, technology is now a utility. There's not very many jobs that can do without it, so it is becoming a utility. And there's a lot of pieces and parts that come behind that. You know, for the technical people, there's a lot of IT techy people, right, in Apex. They may want more of the background and maybe familiar, you know, with different types of software platforms and what they do, and how they react, and how they integrate, and understanding that now these the uh, application integrations happen um, a lot more often. And then there's some people that are going to just want to be, I want to pay my bill. So they, you know, I want to turn on my faucet and I want to pay my bill. So happy to to break that down, however you want to be uh, able to communicate that. We can do a techy version, we can do a not so techy version, um, we can do a documentation, we can do a little video, we can do however you would like to see it done. But it it is very complicated. Um, there is a lot of systems going on, you know, coming in, starting. There was, you know, New World was the platform, um, and it was even at, you know, fourteen years ago, was something that was probably oversized for Apex at the time, and now it was, it's it's well undersized. We needed to move on to something else. To be able to keep up with the trends, just take payment alone, how people pay.
That's a very important point, because I think that answers the background question of why do we need to add this additional layer on? And I think that's the.
The all, all of, this is just one piece of it. I mean, this is just, here's some convenient items for you now. This isn't all of the other items. I think you're going to talk about some solar stuff, things that we couldn't do before. Things that this system does that the other one just would not do. Um, so we're, we're happy to.
I also, I think it's important to, because we're really talking two different topics here, right? And we started kind of with the cyber events and impacted that on billing and cap. And the progression over time, as that to, you know, uncovered. The new system implementation is not because of the cyber incident, that was long, you know, prior long before, it was already in place. It's obvious, in deference from the cyber event, because we had data backup from the old tool, right? That you can now move up to, you know, transpose into a different tool that all is over, right? So I think it's 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 important for us to um, be a little bit more specific maybe, and then, yeah, this is not just an IT question, I think this goes for everybody in the room. Kind of where one thing at this and the other thing takes out, right? And then kind of draw a distinction between, this new portal that we're now looking at is not just a cyber attack, right? It was already planned in flight and the worst. It may have affected our timelines and and, you know, accelerated some things. But they're really two different projects, right? And I think that that message is not clear.
I remember these discussions like in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, right? Possibility of changing to a new system.
Right.
That was being discussed a long time ago. And then what I remember that conversation was, we're going to dip our toe in the water, wow, that's going to be a lot. Let's, let's hold off on that, because it was a lot of changes that needed to happen. And we had a lot of process. Oh, I was just saying, we had a lot of process, went through a lot of, you know, collecting, what are we going to do? So a lot of prep work before we actually went into that.
But if we, we accelerated some things, that should be our thing, you know, because we replaced multiple tools, multiple PFPs. And not everything is working a hundred percent on the nose. Right, it's, we're kind of getting, being users complated to issues, right? Saying that we're still dealing with the the aftereffect of the cyber incident.
We are not.
In reality, we're dealing with a whole new, et cetera, implementation issue, right? And and again, like, I think those two conversations can separate a little bit better than what they are right now. So that's, you know, we can, you know, more clearly articulate to our residents. You know, why our bill that we received last week was forty days long versus, you know, two month bills, three month bills is different in the whole period.
Right. Yeah, and and I think this was, this kind of to the effect of of all the stuff that we're doing, that it tightens. So we're doing this on top of, so nothing to do with the cyber event. But we're implementing a new system, software, which I'm sure you know, never comes up for, right? There's always, yeah, there's always something that we have to do. So this is kind of the representation of that. You're correct, cybersecurity event is over, that, you know, had nothing to do with uh, anything that we're dealing with now. This was all prior and planned. This is just a representation of, this is all of the systems that we changed. Um, I think we had some information back there on SCW, some customers calling in. They were helping us for the first month. I think there's an average of thirteen hundred calls in July. And eighty percent of those calls were simply, I just bought my account up, which is great. So yes, there are definitely going to be some issues that happen. Um, I've got some tickets in myself, you know, as well as staff does, as well as whatever has been called in. Um, and they're quickly resolving those, but you're right, this is a whole new set of issues. And I think we're just expressing that it's, it's very tough.
No, and I think I appreciate that, and I think a lot of people in the room appreciate that. But we're a lot closer to this than, yeah, for particularly customers, right? So even in in a work session like this, where we're really going from one topic to the other without completely separating. Okay, now we're starting to talk about something completely different, right? Uh, I I think that message, you know, could be a little clearer out there. So, you know, if there's anything that's, you know, to those great points, how do we better articulate that? Right, and make it a little bit more transparent, if we can, I think that that will help.
And I think another way of saying is, the issues we're having now, we have a kind of. Right, so the problem is, we had that open wound for a lot of our customers, and then it just kind of reopened that one completely. Except for that, um, and and the timing was, was part of it too, and how we proceeded. And there was some ties to the cyber event as we were making transition to new systems from that. It made sense for us to kind of go all in with a lot of our systems. I mean, you could comment on that, but to invest in an old system that we're no longer leaving versus investing in a new system, you know, we're going to, it just made sense for us to do that, but that doesn't make it less clean. Um, and I did want to pause for a second, since we talked, we talked a little bit about communications messaging. We have our communications director, I didn't want to leave her out of that discussion. If you wanted to add anything, Stacy, to the discussion, because I know you've been in the throes of it. And and speaking to the complexity of the message that we've been trying to get across, um, and an interest level in that message too, is is part of it. Like Erica said, people want the water to turn on, they don't necessarily want to know the valves we have to open, the wrenches we have to use to get that. And that's almost what we, we tried to get across because of the complexity.
A general message has been very difficult throughout the past year. To communicate very generally what, what is a broad issue for customers is tough. Our staff has done a great job communicating individually with individual customers who have very specific questions about issues with their accounts, and been able to walk them through those issues. And and the end of that conversation has a resolution. There is understanding on the other side of that conversation, and that just takes a lot. Um, and you have limited resources, and only seven eight hours in a workday, and all these projects I have to get done too. Um, but I've seen that time again, where our customers are leaving with some understanding of their, how they were really able to dive deep into those um, details. Communicating that for us method broadly is difficult, um, like you mentioned, because there are two cycles. So what applied to half the town does not apply to the other half. And we found that people really didn't understand which cycle they were part of most of the time. And so explaining that piece, well, you're typically billed around the first month, but I know this month you weren't, because we had some delay. And so it's been very challenging to communicate very broadly. Um, we do this, we can, we also understand that not everyone wants to read all the details. And so where I want to put a long wall of text is, customers, I feel like you would call it, um, people really just want wall of points. Um, and they want to really be able to understand those wall points, and so that helped, and it's been, it has been a long enduring challenge. And and all the things that we're working on now will improve that, just to get to that.
I I also want to emphasize, and I think a couple of people mentioned it, and Stacy's a good example, Jessica's a good example, Erica's a good example. The same staff that were working on all of these projects were keeping the town running. And it's not like we're a status quo town, right? We are a town that's moving forward and has a lot of projects, and so it wasn't even just about keeping the lights on. It was keeping the lights on and and building solar into it. And and so it was not even just status quo, it's taking things to the next level. And so the expectations and the stress put on staff in all areas, I just mentioned a few, but ask Apex. We've got a lot of different areas of this organization that were stressed with the growth alone that we're addressing in Apex. And then you throw this on top of it on the heels of the cyber event, and it's not to minimize what our residents have been through. But your staff has been through a lot with these projects, and the fact that we are still plugging ahead and moving ahead on all fronts is amazing. Um, and so I did want to put that plug in, staff has been backstall.
So I I I couldn't agree more on that, and I think that what I think is the best value of this sort of conversation is, it gives us an opportunity to help, I mean, we might ask the question of, you know, how do we best communicate that? Is not necessarily to throw that on Stacy or to throw that on staff, but that's, and that's incumbent upon all of us in terms of leadership to be able to help explain these issues in a clear and coherent manner without creating confusion. That is incumbent upon us. So getting this background helps all of us as we are helping explain and discuss and 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 understand these things. Because, you know, Erica said it best, when you're having a new computer program that's coming on board, you're going to have mistakes. So we're going to have mistakes, there's going to be errors. I think part of it is going to be us basically saying, okay, let's, you know, we're going to look into these errors. But more importantly, let's understand the basis of how we get to these errors. And this is more than simply bill shows up, there's some pieces behind it. And helping people understand that, because I generally think most people in the town, people felt like, oh, well, we're moving to a new system, not because of cyber attack, but because this was something that we need because we're running town. People in this town will say, okay, I understand. And just helping make you that explanation will ultimately build that level of understanding along the way. Because I firmly believe that the residents of Apex, you know, are sitting here thinking that there's still real going on. I think what they want is, they just want to know what's going on. And some people just want to know, hey, if I turn on the water, there's a lot of running. And some in this community are tech enough where they're like, well, tell me what the SCW is and explain to me what's happening on the back end. And us being able to just make sure that we're being, put the right folks in those buckets and be able to direct them in the right direction, and be able to help explain some of these processes, to me is the real value I get out of these processes. They 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 help us so that we can help you guys and help the residents understand.
I I think, I think that's a good point. And and what I'll say is, I probably get the most phone calls from any other council member here, for whatever reason. I've never heard anyone say anything negative about any town staff, they're like, they work hard, we know it's not them. I'm looking at a bill, and it's, you know, four hundred dollars more than it should be. I had a guy call me, and they say he had a fifty thousand dollar pair. So it's just like, what do I supposed to do?
Yeah.
And it was plain the system doesn't help in in those situations.
I think in those extreme instances, right, there's definitely, there are definitely things that happen on a regular basis in a billing cycle that could cause, you know, an error like that, and and those can address very quickly. Um, it's hard, it's hard to say how you should answer that particular question without referring them back to staff to dive into it.
And and I do that for sure. And and I know there's a, you guys are busy, because sometimes they can't get through, I understand all that. For me, my recommendation, we're talking about communications here, this is what I hear all the time, is consistent communication. Like weekly, enough day, weekly update regardless of there are no updates or whatever. Maybe people would appreciate that, uh, they help them understand it better. I think, you know, based on what we hear today, it's it's really a trust. And and I know you said people, you know, they they understand that no one is causing the deal, but that doubt is there. Um, and and it's not a personal thing for anyone in this staff, or anyone that's rude. But people are starting to have, like, I don't know, this keeps happening. So I just think we just need to put it on the table and build it.
Yep.
I'll link to some of that in my next slide, um, some of the challenges that we encountered because of all these systems that Erica kind of spoke to, um, that might shed some more light on the conversation. Like, not again, not cyber, but we're going to be talking about challenges from implementing all these new software.
Same.
Um, so you saw the matrix of software that we use, and and a lot of those systems, they integrate with each other. Um, and so bringing those, having all these systems in play, there are challenges, as we've all kind of talked about um, already, that we've encountered. And I just wanted to list some of these challenges, so you guys got, have more context, understand what we've been addressing behind the scenes, um, and what staff has been working on. So again, multiple system integrations, um, missing reads, like we had.
Can you explain each of these a little bit more, maybe two? I don't know what these things mean.
Yeah, yeah. So missing reads, um, sometimes we had meters that weren't communicating. Um, and we, we are switching to meters that um, now can send the reads to us so that we don't have to drive out. But if a meter is not communicating, then we have to roll the truck to get the reads for that meter. Um, we had meters that were not in our new utility billing inventory. Um, that's a process change that um, we um, encountered. In New World, the meter did not have to be in the system prior, and Martin, you correct me if I'm, I'm speaking out of my lane. But the meter didn't have to be in our New World inventory at the time of the read. Our staff could get the read and then add the the meter into the inventory, but that's not how it is with this, with Millsoft. Before it will accept any of these electronic reads, all the meters have to be in the inventory system. So once we were aware of that, staff began to make changes to make sure that all the meters that were out in um, throughout town are in our our billing software, so that we didn't run into this issue going forward. Um, the configuration of meters, as Erica mentioned, we have a lot of different brands of meters out there. Now we have this um, new system IP Keys, where it doesn't matter what brand you have, IP Keys is going to send those reads to Millsoft. But IP Keys is new, and so the configurations with those meters, they had to get tweaked. And so sometimes the, um, the files weren't, we weren't able to get all the reads through IP Keys for some of the meters. So we had to kind of work through that, you know, first month of uh, of, in the new system, these are just things that we had to address.
You've also, you you mentioned a couple of times, you you couldn't get the reading, does that mean that you got to take the truck out and do it? And does that mean that the the building, uh, the building duration is longer, or the the cycle is longer for that person, or like?
So, yes and yes. So um, when a meet, a read is missing, sometimes we do have to roll the truck. Um, but the configure, um, configuration of meters, those is the meter, the reads weren't getting, IP Keys wasn't picking up those reads. And so we had to figure out why IP Keys wasn't picking up those reads, and I'm getting outside of my technical lane.
There was a software issue that didn't allow, so we had the reads, we had rolled the trucks, had the reads. But when we first started, we first ran cycle one, but yeah, I don't, I get confused on which cycle. Begin, when we first mentioned over the middle of all, the, when we first went into that program, there was showing up a lot of what they call.
there was showing up a lot of what they call variances, which is a high or low read. And what turned out to be were there a large number of meters that were not coming over into IP keys, but they weren't reading. So it had the same reading from the last month to the previous month of showing everybody the zero consumption. So it was, it's too, like Jessica said, it was, it was all these different things all at once we were finding out, right? So we found out that they had to do a software search because we, before, when they first started putting the data in, it was going in that they tweaked one thing and then that messed something else up. So then they, they got that corrected, got all that data loaded. And then the inventory was the other big thing that we had to get figured out, which we're in good shape now. So it was just a lot of those things going on. And then with, so you, and right now we've got three different meter systems out there. We've got the census system, which is the new system, which is the meter system upgraded we're ultimately going to. We've got the Itron system, which is the drive by system, which is the old, old system that's water and residential electric. And then we've got the Elster commercial system, which is, it's, it's a mesh network. So we all, so you've got to gather all those different reads and it pulls that into IP keys. It has the raw data, Millsaw takes that and then they do their magic, the fact that they do.
Okay, so for the customer, if they're, if they're involved with one of these things that happened, what is usually what happens on their bill that's weird for them? Or, or is it not, is it not going to show up in the bill?
It may cause a longer billing period. So if we picked up the reads on one day or let's, for a particular route and there were some reads that were missing, the folks that were missing, if we end up having to roll the truck, then their read will be added the day that we rolled that truck. So there may be longer billing day, number of bills, number of days bill in their, in their bill.
Okay, and, and by longer, you mean like?
More than thirty days.
A couple of weeks or could it be like the three month thing like we talked about before?
Yeah, three month was with cyber.
Okay, yeah.
So that's, I want to put that to the side. This is more, it, it would be days. Um, I think we had an average around forty-ish days on our last billing cycle. So we're not talking two, three months, it's just longer than thirty. And people are used to seeing a thirty day bill cycle.
People that are seeing like a thirty percent increase in their bill is likely due to this thing.
It could possibly be, so they should check the number of days in there.
Days will be, will, will be listed. And then the thing you mentioned about, you know, the, the, it sounds like a, a decimal place got moved for the bill that you mentioned, the crazy one. So that, that's, that those are different than what you're talking about, which is correct amount. It's just because the, the cycle is longer or the duration is longer, okay?
Can I go back to the investment? Like when you see things like that, is there checks and balances before they go out? Or it's just where it is, it just?
There is so many reviews that happen. Um, but again, we have the, the computer or the system does checks as well as staff. When you have staff reviewing seventeen thousand, and not, not all of them will come up with an error or something. But things, people are human, can be missed, which is another reason we want to look to kind of shorten or shrink the billing cycles to make them a little smaller and more manageable.
And if there's like a, a water leak that caused a really high usage to happen, how are we finding that versus the longer billing cycle that kind of, it, it seems like it confounds that? Like you, you would want that to be identified as soon as possible. But people maybe aren't getting that identified because there, we had this kind of unevenness in the billing right now.
I would recommend people when they get their bill, take their total and divide it by the number of days. Because if you look at your water consumption divided by the number of days or you do that for electric, then that is a much better indicator than what your bill is in July or your bill is in here. It's all spring day. So if you go longer days, your bill's, you know, so if you had, if you go ten percent, you go forty days instead of thirty, your bill should be about twenty-five percent or more.
Is there so short of twenty-six thousand customers breaking out of coffee? Right, with the new world that we have, right? Can we include some of those statistics kind of on, on the world, like my daily attitude?
There's coming, it's coming. All of that stuff, all those pieces are coming, even like the special things that you could do, that, that is all coming. But as you mentioned before, we're trying to make sure this works first. We get all the king style, we're not going to add anything new. And then we're going to really start adding these different features. And to go, to go back to Brett's really quick too, um, just to be transparent, they could have to roll the truck for a water meter, you guys can keep, but not for an electric meter. So you can have different days for both. You could have a longer duration, and I live in Apex. So I know, I've been seeing the bills, right? So one, one time I might've had forty days worth of water, but only thirty days worth of electric. So you have to look at, and then the next month I had less days in water, right? I had twenty days in water, it's still thirty days in electric. So looking at the differences with even in the meters, electric versus water, I'll just take an example. It's something to make sure that people are doing, um, to see. Because with all the different meters, all the different things and reads that are coming in, we're getting, as she said, what we're getting for that day. And the system won't do that. It will, it will tell you the duration it came and how long those keys are. So doing the multiplication and, you know, adding it, as Marty said, is, is a good way to determine, but just to take note, right? Something to take note of. And a lot of that stuff right now is best apparent on the physical bill. Um, we're trying to get some of that stuff into the portal, but aligning what fields go to what to show to the customer in the portal while trying to be very secure with what we're sending, um, it's going to cause that to be a little slower. Hundred percent, we're going to do all that, um, within, when the portal, um, when we get to that point. But right now, some of that stuff you may not be able to see in a portal. So you want to go to the physical bill to see dates, when was my meter date for electric versus?
So I guess one observation and one question. But the observation then, like, for any of this who work, work reliably, we got to stabilize the billing cycle, right? So that's customers can expect thirty, thirty-one day bill, right? So you got to normalize where we are. Um, and so I, I think later in the decade, there's some comments about that. Um, so I'll put that. My, my question, and I think it's kind of the theme that we've been hearing here, is, okay, we are aware of a series of problems with the system performance, right? Be it on the meter side, be it on the technology side, right? What can we do to articulate to our residents, hey, this has happened, right? We have multiple system integrations. Here's what we found, right? We found that, you know, certain data feeds were not happening. Here's the impact on utility billing, as we've seen it. Here's our path to green or how we have remediated that situation, right? And if we haven't remediated yet, right? What is our expect, expected dates to remediate? And because again, we're a lot closer to this information than anybody else in town, right? This makes perfect sense to the people that are up their eyeballs in this every single day. But to outlive my gans point, it's like, as a, as a resident, you would, you know, what, what's the impact on my bill, right? How, how do I see this manifest itself? Um, and so again, if, if we can put it on the website, wherever, right? Kind of just break this down and say, this is the issue, here's the impact on your utility bill, here's what we're doing, fix it. Here's what we did, fixing it. And just kind of, two years of punch, right? This needs to be fixed, right? And we're working on it, right? And give the residents the satisfaction to confidence that we are indeed working that way.
Um, so a brief summary of that information is included in that billing cycle on the printed, uh, paper. But we're doing a printed, they're ever billed now in a Bible, new for us. More information of the, of what we have before, like a whole, whole page instead of you see like a little thirty page lift. So specific comment, hardly a whole page of information. We have a little bit of that in, in there as well. And then I think, I don't know what's, it's an update with that information. And as you're speaking, I'm thinking of a page that could list some known issues. Um, and the time to resolve can be tricky. I mean, that we're reliant on the vendor to update software stats and things that we might've expected, how we expected it to work. It's not exactly showing up in the portal like we expected. Or maybe it depends on the bill a little weird, um, and it's going to map certain field. The data's all right, it's just presented strangely and especially in a different, um, the bills are different. And so where people are being sucked into something that's certain place that they're paying attention, um, they see it in a different perspective. So a known issue table, this, this is something we understand as a problem. We understand that like this auto pay is not working for this specific subject customer. Uh, we know it's happening and will, will not complete on this page when it's, when it's right. So that they at least know that it was resolved instead of just trying to make it.
Right, because, but, but we want to avoid this people going back to old issues and saying like, oh, that must, that must be my problem. Well, it cannot longer be the problem because we've already, you know, throw up that one solution, right? But again, like this is a, a big change for, for the town, right? This is a massive technology change with a lot of connected pieces. The fact that there are some problems is just not surprising. It's still very frustrating if you're on the receiving end of a bill that looks, right? So I just want to say, okay, let's acknowledge that we have some, some issues. Let's be transparent about them, put it out there, you know, is issue impacted the bill in this way? Resolve or, you know, here's, here's what we're doing about it, right? And just to kind of create a little bit more transparency, because in, in absence of information, people create their own narrative, right? And, and so I think we've, we've seen some of these narratives over the past year, really both cyber and then the new, um, system implementation. And I think we just, you know, we can do better take the air out of them by being a little bit more forthcoming with, with this kind of information. Right, and it creates a trust issue, like the mayor said, right? It creates a trust issue where twice in a row now we're, we're having issues with billing, right? They're completely unrelated events, right? That's, again, as a, as a utility customer, you experience the same pain in, you know, for a prolonged period of time now. But it's like, okay, these guys not know how to, like, how do I trust my next? Right, and then so I think we need to maybe overcorrect a little bit, but we've got to regain that, that confidence, trust from the.
Um, I'll just wrap this slide up by saying that most of the items on here have either been addressed or being currently addressed, um, right now. But I just did want to highlight, um, these challenges. So provide context to just understand what we've been working through and how that impacted, um, the customers.
Sorry, on the last slide, who's B and C?
Oh, sorry, Philly collection. It's just their busiest time of year with all the move-ins and move-outs.
Just making sure I'm on the.
Yeah, no worries. So we're going to switch gears, talk a little bit about the solar program. So the purpose of the solar program was for residents to use solar panels and generate more power than used. Those residents would accrue additional kilowatts that could be used to offset their electric, um, usage. Those credits would roll from month to month. And at the end of the fiscal year, any unused kilowatts will be forfeited. Um, this program was always intended to offset electric usage. Um, there were limitations with our previous software, New World, where it could not, um, it wouldn't support just limiting the offset to just electric. So, um, what happened was the offset was ended up being applied to electric, to base charges, to water and sewer and any other charge, um, on their bill. So one of the many reasons that we selected Millsaw was because it could support, um, the solar program, the way we intended it to be run, which means that these excess kilowatts would only offset electric usage and will no longer be used to offset the electric base charges or any other service. Um, the base charges are built into our rate model and the rate model helps us, um, set rates that can help maintain our system both currently and in the future. And so when we are having these credits offset, um, electric base charges in particular, we're putting our, um, our electric system at, at financial risk. In addition, there are accounting implications that come with these credits offsetting services that they're not intended for. Um, electric, water, sewer, garbage, those are, those are in different funds. So we're talking three different funds. And so we have when, um, the electric credits are offsetting, um, revenue in another fund, um, or non-electric services, we're offsetting revenues in the water source fund, for example, or in the general fund where, for garbage. And so that's just not a practice that we should continue to do. We should really be, um, offsetting the service that, um, those credits are, um, being supported by. Now, just to note, we did not change the solar program. Solar program is unchanged, it's always been like this. We just changed, um, our ability to administer the program properly was the only change. Um, and so because this has impacted some residents, we wanted to kind of highlight this, um, solar program and just kind of talk through, um, that there's no change to the program, just a change to how we administer that. Any questions on solar?
So. And to say your last point, right? We, we changed the way that we administer the program as it was always defining. In that effect, though, it's still that some solar customers are going to see a change in their, their bill, right? Most, you know, those, the, the access capacity that will generate is no longer offsetting some of their other town charges, right? So again, I think we need to be very transparent about this, right? I, I think last year we voted to no longer allow offset of base, uh, base charges and things like that. I thought we, we still generate enough revenue to maintain our electric infrastructure that these customers are still part of. Um, but again, like, yeah, I think we need to be transparent about it. What, what is, what's, what's, yeah, the impact of that is going to be. Um, but I'd also like to get, I'm not here right now, but an opinion or a position from our electric utilities on, you know, is there a place for buyback of power? How will that fit with our consumption from the news? Like, can we use excess power generated by solar to lower our loads, you know, during certain dark parts of the day, right? But what kind of rate system would be appropriate for that in terms of buyback versus, you know, the time use rates that we've been talking about, right? Um, I know that's kind of looking ahead a little bit, but I think if, if, if we're going to be running solar and the solar program as intended, then I think we need to kind of declare a position on some of these things. Are you the period?
Well, and if I follow up, can I follow up? Cause I think there was an issue with billing and an issue with the meters before we could do any kind of policy changes like this, right? Is that correct, remembering that? And so we have the billing thing taken care of now, but the metering still is a problem?
Question. Problems. Do you think about changes until we understand the effects of the system? Whether or not it's truly offsetting, whether it's solving this with our peak and, um, or is there anything that, that was?
And the, and the new meters are not in yet for electric, right?
No, we, we haven't started that mass exchange yet, and we'll not start till September. So we, we're looking around September without, uh, doing a mass change off. But we're still doing some testing and stuff right now. We do have about twelve, thirteen hundred electric meters out in the system to our testing and stuff right now. And they're doing, I saw one, you know. So new meters will have a received and a delivered. Delivered is what we sell to the customer and received is what we get back from the customer. All meters will have that. If, if by default, the receive will be set to basically be off. And if anything comes to the receive, you know, it'll call an alarm because it shouldn't be power coming back to us. If somebody doesn't have any power on their side, that could be somebody who may have hooked up their generator or something to their house and didn't have power kicked to the house and kicking power out to the grid, which is not a good thing. It'd be very dangerous for our electric folks. Um, so you got to have all the proper stuff in place when somebody is sending power back to you. So that, that will give us that piece. And the relevance of that is the current meters we have have a single register for the most part. Some, some solar has, some of our solar customers are different. But generally our solar customer is one meter and it's net meter. We show up at the meter, it's got a number on it, you subtract it from the month before, it's either positive or negative. If it's negative, that meant they sent us power, if it's positive, that's what they're buying, right? So, and that's, and what, the problem with that is you have really no idea what we're going, like, inside the house, how much power they're actually using and all that stuff, you just get a number. So and that's, and what the problem with that is you have really no idea what we're going, like, inside the house, how much power they're actually using and all that stuff. You just get a number. When you do go to delivered and receive, that will break it down into we will know when they purchase power from us and we will know when they are sending power back to us. And ultimately, at that point, then you can, your rates will be what the rates are when you set rates and they can, you can apply the same rate to received and delivered, or you can apply different rates. If you will. Under the current setup for net metering, the rate for delivered and the rate for received is the same. But you can change that if that counts. The question on peak demand with solar. Because our peak demands are very in a window during the summer, say three thirty to four thirty or three thirty to five during the summer. It's impossible to know whether or not solar is going to be able to contribute at that time. So for for load management, peak load management is typically either going to be done with a battery system or it's going to be done with a generator, just natural gas power. Uh, typically, uh, like Western Wake, um, the regional water working regulation facility in New York, they run generators to shape peaks. Um, or they give a signal from electric cities uh, through us, they run generators as part of the planning for us. Generators running in Apex, I think last month saved on the order of like two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars off our. Sure, just to give you a little bit of idea of the impact. But that's controllable because you could, you send them a signal and they hit, oh, with solar, you can't do that. You can do that with batteries if the system is separate.
And just to clear, I'm not suggesting that we replace all of that and then go like exclusively on solar, but solar, you know, shaving a hundred and fifty thousand off, right? If 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 there's not delivery at that point in time. And again, like, we don't have to answer that here because I think it goes more towards a rate study and and all of that stuff. And uh, I just, again, like, just from my perspective, I'd like to to start working towards a a policy of, you know, of what we intend to implement when all the bits and pieces are there. And that now seems to be the right time because we are still implementing the capabilities, right? We've got that second billing stuff sorted. We're still working on the metering, right? But I think those policies we can now develop concurrently so that one, all the, all the structures and, right? We get to that and say, okay, you know, here's now the policy that that we're adopting to instrument our solar program.
Yeah, so could next year's budget be informed by, will the billing and then the the meter areas, will those those all be in place by next July so that a policy discussion can happen maybe in the spring to put it in the budget for next year?
I think that it will, I don't think we'll have the meter system upgrade complete probably till July,ish, June, July.
Okay.
We we are having a study done now looking at rates, that that old for electric and so we'll have data for council to look at in the spring.
Is that July twenty-sixth or July twenty-seventh? That you get going.
July next year. The actual exchange of electric should be quicker than water. Good.
And to your point earlier about being transparent and communicating to the solar customers, um, work with communications and a letter was announced to the solar residents. To let them know about this.
Um, I I still would like to ask for something to be placed on our website. So even if if people are considering solar, right, that they have that that information.
So after all that, let's talk about returning to normal operations. Now, as staff gets more proficient in the new systems, the number of days in the cycle will start to return back to the normal thirty-ish days. Um, and just a reminder, that's just not finance learning the new systems. That is water resources and electric. They all have processes that were impacted um, with the software change. Um, do want to um, shout out Jessica Sloan, who helps coordinate the necessary conversations that we have with all the players, including our vendors, so that we can continue to tighten up the billing process from beginning to end. So it's something that we are currently doing and trying to address. Um, now because of the cyber event, we paused this connections and late fees. Um, it's been well over a year. Um, and so returning to normal also includes bringing back our delinquency process. So starting in November, we're looking to green state late fees. Um, then in February, we would like to start to resume this connection for unpaid services. In order to do that, we have to start to address our delinquency. Um, we've had a significant number of accounts that are delinquent and we intend to notify those residents and work with them to get their individual accounts back into good standing. Um, plan to do that by offering payment plans and we shot kind of a little bit too, not just the normal six-month payment plan that um, has typically been our practice because some of these, some folks have higher um, unpaid balances, but extending that to a year to kind of um, gives residents more time to get caught up um, with these unpaid balances.
I'm coming on that real quick. I I totally understand. We got to get back to it, but to your point, um, I I think like add this into the conversation back out to the media right now. And we're not even stabilized yet. It's problematic. Again, we're looking at trust, transparency, and this right here will be an explosion of community. Putting this information out.
I I would just, I would add to that. I mean, we we could certainly not go that path. But we need to also think about the implications beyond that because as Jessica pointed out, I mean, these are, these are funds, right? And so it's starting to significantly add up the amount of delinquencies, right? We have a current number on that, but it's not thousands of dollars. It's it's a lot more. Um, and so at the end of the day, whether it comes in and addressing delinquencies, or we're faced with a discussion in terms of rate adjustments and ex budget cycle. So we were trying to think about timing that we can address it, start to recover before we get into the budget rate discussion. Otherwise, we're going to have to come in and say, hey, we're short a couple million dollars across the board. We've got to increase rates to make up for that, and that's going to impact all of our customers. So there are, there are trade-offs with it. So whether you go that route or the other route, one way or another, those funds have to remain solid with reserves and moving forward. Um, so whether it's recovery of delinquencies or spreading it amongst the system, all of the rate.
And if I may, mayor, because I I assume your point was slightly there. Uh, I think that's the point that I heard you correctly was we have yet work to do to stabilize things. Like, we are not quick and clean. And so to start signaling, now we're saying like, hey, we're going to be charged for late fees and then assuming delinquencies again, right? Well, we're still have house to clean. Seems a little bit out of, out of tune. I understand what you're saying. And I think we should start signaling that, hey, at some point, we're going to bring back late fees and not pursue the delinquency and then, you know, our intent to do that. But before we start any program like that, we've got to have our house in order, right?
That's got to shake it, yes.
But I I don't disagree. I'm just saying the reality is whether we get our house in order in the next month or two, we're still going to be faced with that.
Same way.
I mean, obviously, we want to, we're trying to space it out. I think February was working on the.
And that's why, yeah, that's why we're not trying to say, you know, we want to initiate a late fee and the the link or cutoff now. Um, but we do want, if we're going to start having these discussions, um, in an effort to be transparent to residents, we don't want to us have these discussions internally um, amongst ourselves and not share. And then, you know, February, they're hit with a disconnection or November, they have late fees. So at least we're getting this communication started so that they know that, you know, things are going back to normal and we're going to have to start getting into a place where we pay our bills um, every month.
I understand. Is is there um, another scheduled work session with this kind of topic? Maybe we could revisit that.
There's not one on um, schedule yet.
But we're not looking at, I mean, we're not implementing this within the next.
Yeah, this was just a conversation to start, just to start the conversation. This is not like we're saying November, we're looking to start the late fees and that's still months from now. And by November, we should be stabilized as a system.
And and the part of the goal for the immediate is to get that payment dialogue out there and to let people know that we're not just doing this to six months, to twelve months. So we're not saying, hey, bring everything current right away. We're spreading it out in twelve months. Just getting that dialogue out.
We need to raise this conversation. That way we can see how the system's taking place, get there's any new. Information out there to be, you know, if we're, you know, talking about if it's a few years ago. But yeah, because I want to make sure like people are saying that we are stabilized as a system, building that trust back. With that and with that, we're talking about this.
Hey, I kind of feel like, you know, the month might be a little short. I mean, it seems as though we're still finding kind of, we're still defining and finding error rates. I mean, it's, do you think a month is enough time? Do you need more time? Before we kind of come back? Because it's pretty clear that we're not going to start, when we start talking about this returning normal, this is when we start talking about, talking about returning normal. We're, we're starting to go off. I mean, I I don't think it hurts us to say a month and then we can come in and we come in and say, hey, this is what we know. And we're going to have to give victory to them and say, all right, then one more month or two more weeks, whatever. But it could be a, an item on that. So.
Can I ask, ask real quick? Um, it'd be nice to know to put some numbers to the house in order comment. Like, I'd love to see hopefully a chart that looks like this where it's, you have, you have the most errors at the very beginning and it's it's dwindling off, hopefully in this kind of curve where it's it's happening really quickly at the beginning and will be low by the end. Like, do we have some internal numbers that we could probably share? Like, how many accounts have a issue and and seen that over time in the last few months?
Not exactly. I mean, we have different, we have a day going on, different calls to come in, but I urge you not to say which ones are there because we have a lot of calls that are not true errors. That's not the meaning. So that that's, you get calls and like we heard earlier, we worked through a lot of these conversations. And so to say like.
Yeah, maybe not errors.
Have you tracked like what's the.
Unusual bills.
Yeah, so unusual bills.
I'm not sure calls are the right thing either. It'd be nice to have like a actual numbers like of in our system, what the unusual will be defined as.
Or going back to that, things to fix, right? It's kind of like, okay, we have a a defects backlog of twenty, right? And a month later, it's ten, and a month later, it's two, right? So you can kind of see that burned down, issue being. And so, um, I mean, and 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 maybe there's kind of a hybrid approach that we can take where, you know, we do want to start reaching out to those customers that kind of overdue balances, right? And start working with them on on payment plan. They understand how we got here, the cyber incident in particular. Right? And then start kind of the process for people to work with us more or less voluntarily, while we're still getting our house in order around the new billing system. And then, you know, for those, you know, which presumably a much smaller number of customers that absolutely refuse until our perfect order. You know, we have to wait until we can, you know, you state our our normal delivery processes and collection processes. Um, but on the basis of, okay, everything is clear, resolved, right? We have, they can do through like bill and bill history. Right? This is, you know, this is what it is, right? There's no more question to be asked here, right? Now it's done, right? And so uh, um, and in terms of updates, we counsel, I I would like to request a monthly, at least every, I mean, I'm giving you a presentation or a manager update. That we, you know, this arguably one of the biggest problems facing our time. And so I think for us to months of all, but if a two months, this is is not appropriate, you know, I think more frequent updates are are warranted.
Or there was very important.
Yeah, and there could always be some.
I found that with the ticket idea, if we're seeing tickets get the, the number of open tickets is dropping over time, that would be a vote of confidence that we're getting ready to get close to the regular order. Or something like that. I mean, I I just want to see it in the chart, frankly.
Want to see data.
I want to see data, not just, yeah, because right now, you know, it seems, sometimes it sounds chaotic. I'm not sure if it's just a few people or if it's dropping. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Like, it's hard to know.
The first meeting of each month. So it appears that we're monthly, that's normally the lighter. We'll just have a standing item.
Turning over to Sean, um, for the Saturday.
So this is just a real quick timeline view. And during everything going on, there's been a long transition. Um, and just want to point out that who does the R S A that endured and worked through and worked very hard on it? And it done a great job in that. Um, doesn't not mean it has not come back. In extent, there's been exhaustion, frustration, um, and unfortunately, that's also led to some of the turnover as well. Um, the problem with that is it's a downward spiral, right? It's a big feedback loop. And so that creates more exhaustion more when when we have where people have been working. It's been one of the biggest challenges. It's also been advised on resources that maybe we were lacking in this and as we tried to rebuild it. So just wanted to let you know where we are in terms of the existing or kind of standing uh, team that is is there and what we're trying to do. And then some other things that Jessica and they're working on, just to underneath like support and rebuild with uh, resources. So first and foremost, um, we know we're in transition with our finance director. Jessica's been filling in as our interim finance director. And appreciate the work she's done to help stabilize us and things she has set up before she leaves us in a couple of weeks. Um, but that's not. We're very, we're very excited for her and her opportunity as well. So she's going, she's done a lot to help us get it to where we're going. And we already have the plan we have for next few weeks. It's also very ambitious. I appreciate her for that. Uh, what I wanted to let you know is that we did conclude, introduce uh, this past Friday and expect to make it up very soon. And then it'll just be a matter of how much we can shorten that gap of time between uh, Jessica's departure and the next final inspector. Um, so we're going on that. Then we will still need to backfill the assistant finance director. So Jessica's been doing a job of two for the last four months. Um, and so we have to make sure we get that filled in. Um, we do have a new building collections manager. So we, uh, uh, he started two weeks ago and just started. So he's learning, getting in. Um, obviously, in terms of what we've been talking about today, this is very important. Um, as we've had, uh, that we've had, it's been a gap in in that vision since holidays, I guess. So right around the time that we're switching over to system, uh, and for everything else, going all the training and clearing, because we've been down uh, at least one position in building collections, if not more than transitions. So again, these are things that lack of personnel, it's lack of resources in building collections that costs the ways of doing, training um, people that have knowledge or with us, create backlog. There's just a lot of things that when you're short staff, that will triple down in terms of. Um, building lectures manager, it started a week ago, sat and had brought on the board. In meantime, we've also lost, um, we lost two of the like a house billing codes. And then the, I say three because the other one, they're nervous and they leave in a couple of months as well. So we're recruiting really for three positions on that, on that team. Um, and so what we've done is right now, we have uh, to help out with building collections, we have four temporary staff that have come on board in the last week and a half. So they're going through training, they've brought on board, and we're considering what, looking at potential for two more to kind of get above where we were. Because what it, this, while you're training, you're starting to get a backlog of things that need to be done. That creates, again, and you start getting behind on the next building site. It's just, it's a bad cycle. And so we're trying to get ahead of that, preparing staffing, make sure we have time to train, make sure we have time to get these people up to speed. Um, so we're looking for that full-time staff. We can bring in additional uh, part-time staff to to offset that and to bring up to training. So, um, we, so we're, the goal is to increase the backup hours by thirty-three percent and upfront, front of the house by fifty percent in terms of the staffing level. Um, that's really only for three people, but that's, it it's, you know, in in addition to getting the full-time folks on. Um, so just to enhance those resources. Uh, just want to kind of let you know where we were. And we've, we've seen the turnover. It does have an impact, not just in doing loss of institutional knowledge and experience, but the time to get people back up to speed and what that causes. So trying to over. And what that causes, so trying to over-hire a little bit right now for temporary folks to to try and get back to more stable process and what we're doing. Learning, everybody's learning new processes right now, it's learning together. So we lost a lot of, a lot of good help over, over the last, really the last few months, definitely last few weeks. So kind of get back to what, just kind of plan less, what we're doing to stay positive. That's a big piece of what, what we're trying to do this back.
Thank you for sharing that and and this is, I really appreciate it because community really needs to understand this, I think this is a help out quite a bit, so thanks for going.
The contract that's staff, does due the contracts low for contracts to hire?
They do, I mean, I would say. That past has been fine, I'm a good person. And you got, so yeah, it's set up for, if it works out, everybody's working on a mutual. Children, what we're receiving, they're happy, we've done that in the past, that's your actual, we're already keepers. Can't stay able in finance division, that's how we ended up with that person. Yeah, if, yeah, if we get the benefit of, we've trained them and.
Right, you have to train somebody new. Somebody's established, has ruined themselves, so we can, you know, make them a full-time worker. Some staffing agencies are more strict about it than others.
Typically, who, yeah, who we've been with, they've been very. Yeah, there's a B, it's just positive, yeah, there's a B, but, you know, was long-term, what was that for? And I think that's, that that concludes where we were, so if you have any questions. Continue to evolve with that, the notes on that for us, we just wanted to. You generally know where we are, just, you made the point about those of us in here and you can, this is really a little bit broad, so for me, what we weren't quite aware of, but then also. What we're trying to do, and also want to let you know what the steps were for us, what we are working on. Take this feedback that you have to. Next steps in the process, those communications.
One last question, so get back to the thing of your points, as far as tracking the progress. How do you receive, like, I I know you come up with deals and say, hey, I think my deal was wrong, but how are you tracking that to, in order to collect that data?
It, this was, that's why I said with the calls, it's kind of hard, it depends on what, what they, typically, if they just come in, we, we do everything we can, we're trying to address that right then. We even have, in our new setup, there's a whole separate room, we have the big screen, everything else, we even go through the counts. We haven't tracked that to, to say, typically, that is almost always resolved. They come in, it's done, it's there. I will say, because, you know, either it's something that we recognize that, yeah, that doesn't give takes a week to do this. Or it's helping the customer understand, I mean, the days on hand or the, the days of service and that's what we typically get that itself. The large ones are the ones that come in through and ask, hey, they've seen, and Darla and her team, they do track that. So we have a record of those, so the number of calls, the types of calls. So we do have some, some data that speaks to some of those, that you heard Erica mention earlier, when this was first one live. Eight percent of our calls were about just keep trying to get them capped, just to get set up. So we do have some of that data to track. But in terms of the type, unless it comes to the call, like the cost of the, of the tracking, what that is, because we should use all the time. The other piece of it, so that is a component of it, I think that's been looked at. Erica, see what we can buy, the other piece more internal that Mr. Siggman hit on is, when you look at some of the variance reports, we can see, you heard Marty and Jessica, but. Like the things where there's issues with the meters, we are going to meter swap out if it wasn't in the inventory. Or it didn't read the right decimal for a reason, we're getting a read, we've got an accurate read, it's just a matter of transition from that meter into the system. That, that system in between, if you've got three different types of meters, what not proven, possibly, maybe it wasn't proven. We, we can look at that, we'll look back at that, see what kind of, what, what those numbers are looking like. We had three thousand meters this time and there are a hundred meters this time. We can look at what's on, so it didn't work. That's one of the internal technical pieces that we can, I just need to see, I know we have a lot of these things, because talk about them every cycle, what happened? Need to look back and see like how it's been recorded, documented, secreted into, into a presentable format. And then, you know. Even if that doesn't work out, I kind of think that is more from a software development point of view, right? It's like, so you have a backlog of defects in this case, right? And you show a burden on overtime. Hey, we acknowledge we have twenty issues, right, of the deal. And not actually every issue is created equal, right? One could be a huge word of work and another one could be, okay, yeah, put the bids and then we're done, right? But, but again, like showing like, because it shows that, yes, you know, we have issues, we're aware of the issues. And we're taking action to resolve those issues, right? And so when you start projecting that and then showing that, right, that gives confidence that, okay, they know what, what. What they're managing, they know what their problems are and know, you know, and then the time is just, it's worked, fixed the test out of, you know, the the decrease that we're seeing in the number of issues that are out there, right? So kind of a burden on charge, whatever format it takes, whether it's meter count or feedback bounds or, but, you know, we, we, I think we do need to show something. That's demo space properly, right? We know we're not in a perfect state, right? But here's kind of the far less rewards to bill.
You have average bill duration over time tracked?
So, yeah, actually, we have that tracker set up, I had, I put that in placement six months ago.
Okay.
So we actually have, it's also like, it's only been issued the last thing. Through June, once we switch.
Okay.
At least we had gotten stabilized after we extended this from last month. We got stabilized actually around December, January, and we're supposed to, they were around thirty, you're taking days. And then when we transitioned to the new, we had, we had a blackout week for it and then we rolled into the system and had challenges. We got extended again, back to the four instead of, for this next cycle, we expect to offset that immediately. So that tracker actually is employees.
Okay. I mean, some chart, the public could see where it's, you know, the cyber event is a, the arrow is saying where that happened and it's going to happen, as I assume, the two and three month thing. And then this, this change out thing we're talking about, but then that, that curve down would be the one I think you would really be happy, hopefully, to see happening. Back to the thirty days, whatever the average is, normal, totally.